Alright guys, I'm here.
Hi Stephen.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So I did start recording the meeting, just so everyone is aware. And the only time one of us gets to do this, I will call our meeting to order at 6:07 PM. I do have a long statement I need to read, just confirming that we are doing this remotely and why. So I apologize for the long statement, but I'll read that. As Chair of this meeting, I have determined that given the potential health issues associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor's declared state of emergency in New Hampshire due to COVID-19 and the public health authorities' recommendations for social distancing, quarantine, and self-isolation, this meeting constitutes an emergency pursuant to RSA 91-a colon two-three-b. In that immediate action is imperative and the physical presence of a quorum is not reasonably practical. And the organization needs to conduct its regular meeting to continue to move the business of the organization forward during this pandemic. As a result, members of the public body may participate by phone and a quorum need not be present. Any actions taken must be by roll call vote. For the record, this meeting has been properly noticed for more than 24 hours. So we will start our meeting with nominations for our Chair. Does anyone want to nominate someone for Chair?
I'll nominate Sarah Lawrence, Chair.
Thanks Stephen. Any other nominations for Chair? Okay, hearing no other nominations, do I have a motion to elect Sarah Lawrence as Chair?
I make a motion to elect Sarah Lawrence as Chair.
Thank you Stephen, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Peter. And we'll need to do a roll call vote for Sarah as Chair. And I don't know the easiest way, I'll call on people if that's easiest. Do you guys normally do alphabetical order? What do you typically do anything? So the vote is for Sarah as Chair, so I'll start with Stephen.
O'Keefe, yes.
Peter?
Eckhoff, yes.
Sarah? Lawrence, yes. And Scott?
St. Dennis, yeah.
The motion carries, zero. And Sarah, do you want me to turn the meeting over to you to do the rest of the organizational meeting? Or do you want me to go through the rest of the, I don't know if you can see it in the Trello board, all of the...
Do you want to just go through it? Because I don't have Trello open right now.
Yeah, yeah, happy to do that. Okay, the next is a Vice Chair. Do I have a... Would someone like to nominate someone for Vice Chair? Stephen?
I'll nominate Peter Eckhoff as Vice Chair.
Any other nominations? Okay. And Sarah, do you want to go through nominations or like roll call vote and so on? Or do you want me to just tell you which the items are? Or do you want me to...
You can do it.
Okay. Either way, work through. Yeah. Um, so we have Peter as our Vice Chair. So can I have a motion to elect Peter as Vice Chair?
I make a motion to elect Peter as Vice Chair.
And a second?
I'll second.
And then roll call vote, Stephen?
O'Keefe, yes.
Peter?
Eckhoff, yes.
Sarah? Lawrence, yes. And Scott?
St. Dennis, yeah.
Thank you, that carries, four-zero. Secretary? Does someone want to nominate someone to be Secretary?
So Scott, this is the fun part for the new guy. On an effort to throw you under the bus, but Jess actually served in this role last year. And she's not here today to finally and calmly accept that nomination. So I would like to nominate Scott St. Dennis as the Secretary.
Um, and any other nominations for Secretary? And I can't see Scott's expression, so I'm hoping he's not saying, "No, no, please."
It's a pretty easy gig, Scott.
It is. And we help you with it. We give you pre-formatted and it's only typically non-public notes that you need to write. We give you a pre, you know, done format for you to check things off. So it's actually a pretty easy role and we do usually offer that role to our newly elected Board Members.
And an occasional thank you note, that's...
Yeah, right, yeah. Do I have a...
Alive and well.
A motion for Scott?
I make a motion to elect Scott St. Dennis as Secretary of the Mount Vernon School Board.
I'll second that.
Thanks Peter. And roll call, Stephen?
Yes.
Peter?
Eckhoff, yes.
Sarah?
Lawrence, yes. And Scott?
St. Dennis, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I've been practicing a lot for this one.
Yeah. And then the next few all go through them, but we don't really need to formally vote. These are different committees, so we kind of just agree. Or, you know, if you've been on it in the past and feel strongly about continuing on it, that's fine. And we're happy to share more details. I know Scott, you're new to us, so just say, "Hey, I need more info" if you want more details on the role. So these are all committee members. So do you want me to run through all of the committees really quickly so you have a sense of them? Or are you guys okay if we go one by one?
Maybe for Scott's benefit, I think it might be good to just go through them really quickly.
Yeah. So there, we need a rep for the Budget Committee for the Town. I know Stephen served on that last year. We need two people to sign the manifest and that is electronic now. So you really, you get basically every pay, every check that we create to pay vendors for reimbursement, any expenditures that we have, any check. We need at least two Board Members to sign off before those checks can actually be released. That's often a role some of our newly elected Board Members end up serving because it really helps you get a sense of just how we operate and really our budget and so on. So it's actually really, people have said, you know, while it's definitely work every two weeks to sit and to go through those checks and approve them, it's really helpful to understand how things work. We'll need two people for the Policy Committee. Jessica and Sarah served on that committee. And it is, you know, we often meet during the school day. So that's a challenge sometimes for some people. I think that's probably one piece to be aware of with that committee. But it's really helpful to understand, you know, policies are brought forward to the Board for approval. But we start at the Policy Committee level where we really collaborate on policies, move policies forward, and we make sure that all Boards are really looking together at those policies. We have a School Budget Committee. So when we're doing our budget, we interface with the Budget Committee and it's the Board representation at the Budget Committee. And then Transportation, we need one person for Transportation. And I'm not sure, Sarah, do you know who served on that? I don't know much detail about Transportation.
I think it might have been Tom. I think it was Tom and it's only when necessary.
Okay.
I don't think it's something that meets regularly.
Okay, thank you. RSCC, I know Sarah has served on that in the past and I believe you're interested in continuing. Is that correct? Adam had you listed. Continuing if you want. So that's the Regional Services Education Commission. And it's actually, we're a partner district with RSCC, so we have reps serve on their school board.
And those meetings are usually during the day.
Yeah, yeah. And then we have the SAU Budget Committee, which typically only meets once. I don't know if they met more often this year, but it's really looking at our SAU budget since the way we work, the SAU budget is voted on by the SAU Board. So we want representatives from each Board. That's a budget that doesn't go to the public. So we want representatives from each Board kind of overseeing and just understanding that SAU budget to provide more context back to your Board before the SAU Board votes on that. And then New Hampshire School Boards Association. I don't know if we had a rep last year or not, Sarah, for the School Boards Association, but just attending meetings or being not based on the State School Board.
I think it was Jessica.
Okay. And we'll have to keep that in mind too. I know she won't be here for these. We don't want to leave her off of things. So I don't know, Sarah, if she would want to, want to, you know, continue on some of those or not. And then, pretty important this year, we have two things coming up. The Amherst School District Tuition Agreement for the Middle School. So negotiations really for that, and then also MVEA negotiations. So we would need two reps for each of those. So Scott, I know that was a lot and I know you probably couldn't remember all of that, but just kind of hearing what each of the committees are and if you have an interest, we'll go through one by one and just let us know. People can kind of jump in and say, "Hey, I really want to do that for that." So the first one is the Budget Committee for the Town. And Stephen, I believe you served on that.
Yeah, so I can take that again if no one else wants it.
Okay, thank you. We need two people for the Manifest.
I can take that to Chair if you want.
Okay. And Scott, are you able and/or interested in that role? Just kind of being able to approve checks and see the operation?
I guess so. I mean, especially if it's done digitally, it'll be easier for me to fit in the timeframe, so.
It literally takes less than five minutes. It's pretty fast. You get an email that lists all of the out invoices and you just basically sign off on a cover page for all the emails saying, "I agree." And then you have an opportunity to ask questions, like, "What's this going for?" Just basically serving as the public eyes over it.
Okay, sure.
It is really helpful for new Board Members. Most new Board Members say like, "Oh gosh, I didn't know what I was getting myself into and I was worried." But they really appreciate having, you know, that experience. So it'll be helpful. And again, at any point with the Manifest, we've had people come back and say, "Hey, things got really busy for me. I'm unable to do this and we can appoint someone else." So, you know, if that, come back to the Board if it's a role you can't continue with. Policy, Sarah, did you, were you interested in continuing on policy? I know you've been kind of...
I do love that committee.
You do, don't you?
I do. I love that committee.
That's what I thought.
Well, if no one wants to fight me for it, I would continue.
Anyone want to fight? We do need, have two reps. I don't know if Jess would want to do that again.
I would say she probably does. I didn't hear that she doesn't, so I would think that we could probably put her on there. And if she doesn't, then we can find someone else.
Yeah, perfect. And then the, our School Budget Committee. So that is representation from the Board when we meet as a Budget Committee to go over the budget with our community members who also choose to be on that committee to help better understand the budget that's moving forward. Who was on that last year? Was it Tom?
It was Tom.
Yeah. And there are technically two spots for that, but I think we typically only have had one Board Member rep. But I don't know, I know Stephen's already doing the Town Committee. I don't know if someone else is interested in that.
I can take that if you want.
Okay, thanks Peter. Transportation, anyone interested in that?
I could do that. I think we're up for a contract negotiation this year, right?
We might be. Michelle wouldn't know, sure.
So I was the rep for last year and was told that it was going to be a pretty boring year because nothing came up and this year would be the exciting one, so I could do that.
Great. And then Sarah, you're going to continue with RSCC. Does someone want to serve on the SAU Budget Committee? It's usually only one meeting and we usually work around people's schedules. So I don't know if someone wants to. And most of it is, you know, personnel in the SAU budget, but it's still a helpful process to go through and have representation.
So Christine, not in an effort to make you go back, but is the RSCC spot a rotating spot? And since we had that last year, does somebody else get it or do we get it for two years?
So I think it rotates through the, so Adam knows more about RSCC. He sits on the Board. And I don't know if it's supposed to rotate, if it's a two-year rotation, it's two years for each.
Okay.
I think it's two years because Galen had it for two years before I did.
Okay, so then Mount Vernon is probably going to South Heagan next for two years.
Cool.
So SAU Budget Committee, do you have any takers?
I can do it.
Okay, thanks Sarah. And then School Boards Association rep. And again, there's, that's not something we've always filled. I think that we've left that unfilled at times. But it's really like a liaison to the state-level School Boards Association. And I think you're able to go as deep as you want to? Or just kind of just be more of that person to check those emails and bring concerns forward? I don't know if anyone wants to serve on that role or if we let it go unfilled and revisit?
Do you want to keep Jess on that, Sarah, is that...
I would say probably. I mean, I think, I think we had talked about that she could go to the meeting if she wanted to last year and the, you know, the Board would pay for that. But other than that, it's really not any huge responsibility, from my understanding.
Yeah, perfect. So Jess will serve on that. And then we need two people to work on the Amherst School District Tuition Agreement and then two people for negotiations with the MVEA.
So we don't have anyone currently on the Board who has done negotiations before. Is anyone particularly passionate about it? I mean, I'm happy to serve on either of them or both, but does anyone else feel like they really have expertise there or passion for it?
And just to give you...
Not it, like...
The tuition agreement, Michelle really would, Michelle and/or Michelle and Adam would really run that process. We would look at the current tuition agreement, talk about any concerns and then, you know, negotiate back and forth. And it's really the Board, you know, possibly attending, those Board reps attending some meetings, but really just getting feedback from the Board. And then you're that, you would come back to your Board to update on that committee work and then...
So based on my prior interest in that category, I can volunteer to do the tuition.
Tuition, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that with you. I know that Adam had mentioned that we might need legal representation for that, so we can talk about that, Stephen, and just see where we need to go next.
And you're never on your own with those negotiations. You know, Adam and Michelle would really run negotiations. It's just that you're the Board Rep to really, because, you know, they're negotiating with the School Board. So you're really looking at changes that need to happen to the contract and you get input from the administrative team on what changes we might want to go forward with. We sometimes even give you things, "Hey, I think we should be looking to increase this benefit." And then, or, you know, this is an area where we really need to look deeply at. And then, you know, you negotiate salaries as well with the MVEA. Okay. So I don't know if anyone's interested in that. It, you know, depends on how negotiations go. They're usually, and those meetings can be held at any time. Sometimes they are during the day, but often after school. I think MVEA normally negotiates after school. And it's, it all depends on, you know, sometimes that goes really fast. Sometimes it is a longer process, so it's really hard to know what that time commitment would be.
I'll put my name in the hat, but again, the time commitment could be an issue if it's a lot of early afternoons and stuff like that. But again, I have no, zero background in salary negotiation, but I certainly would be willing to take a stab at it.
Thanks Peter.
And so just to give you some perspective, Peter, when Kim and Tom did it, they did it, if I remember correctly, just before our Board meetings. So they had those meetings starting at 5 o'clock and then we went right into a Board meeting at 6.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you Stephen. I wasn't sure how that's typically been done in Mount Vernon. Anyone else? I know Stephen and Sarah, do you think Jess would be comfortable with that? Or is that outside of her... Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure. Scott, do you have any calling for that type of negotiation?
I don't think time-wise, I'm going to be able to swing it. If something does look like I could fit it in based on what the timeframe of those negotiation meetings are, I would take it, but I don't want to put myself in there yet.
No worries. I can put myself in there as well, that's fine. Thanks Sarah.
And I could take second or third seat to that. So if there was a situation where Peter wasn't able to show up or Sarah, I can...
Okay, we'll put you down as an alternate.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Good. Okay, Sarah, do you want to move on to the next agenda item? Do you want me to share the agenda? Probably, I have so many windows open here.
I know, I was just pulling it up. Okay, so it looks like now we need to call the regular meeting to order? Does that make sense?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so we're calling the regular meeting to order at 6:27. We have our opening items for review. So the first on the list are the principal reports, which I will turn that over to John if you want to update us on where we're at. Oh, I'm worried John's going to be...
Besides being home along the... We're doing, yeah, sorry. Connection's a little spotty.
John?
The products of which we're working with right now? Yes?
We can't, you're really broken up.
What would you prefer?
John, are you able to call in maybe?
I can do that, sure.
Yeah, try on the phone and see if it, you'll have to go to that analyst email and it should have the details in there. Sorry Meg, what did you say?
I was going to say, one of the things on John's... Well, never mind. He was, I think he was going to update on a variety of topics including special education and how IEPs are being implemented remotely. I can cover that while we...
Yeah.
So the special educations, both the professional staff and the paraprofessional staff have been working really hard to collaborate with regular classroom teachers in creating the Google Classrooms as the platform to provide special education supports and services to the children who would get it if we were in our brick and mortar building. So they have connected to the classrooms that they push into and they've continued that work to support kids actually in the Google Classrooms, which allows them the opportunity for this kind of breakout room session. So if children need smaller group interventions while they're working in their Google Classrooms, they're pulling them out into a breakout session. In addition, our paraprofessionals are continuing to support the students that they ordinarily would be working with if we were in school, also through the Google platform, Google Classroom platform or through Zoom-in meetings. So we're connecting with kids using all of those different pieces of technology, which in some cases, John is a poignant case here. With the technology being a little spotty, we've, you know, been able to help to troubleshoot some of those things with families and do some workarounds. And then if we have seen kids who just aren't engaged, which I would say are pretty few, we've reached out to try and personally connect with parents of those children and support them better. And that includes our school social worker. She has a handful of families and children that she works with, both when in schools and session. And she's continued to try to connect with those families outside while we're remote learning. John, I jumped in while we were, while we were waiting for you to come back.
Yeah, that's fine. Does this work better?
Yes, much better.
Oh, good.
So I don't know if you have questions about that. I just covered your special ed and paraprofessional topic, John.
Yeah, I was able to listen while I was rebooting. Any questions on those pieces for Meg?
So Meg, I do have a quick question. Does that mean then that the kids who are on IEPs are not getting individual, like one-on-one attention? Are they just working in those small group, like breakout rooms during their regular sessions? Or does that mean that they're also getting one-on-one services in that remote learning environment?
In most instances, they're getting both. And included in that, kids who are getting, when we're in school, if they're getting speech or occupational therapy, physical therapy, things of that nature, we're also providing that remotely. We have combined some of those related services just to make it easier for some families. They were saying, you know, "My child is with speech and OT and their special ed intervention and the classroom responsibilities, it was too much." So in some cases, we've been able to combine speech and OT and do what we call co-treats. And we've tried to make it just user-friendly for families as we can. But if a child gets a one-on-one intervention, we are still attempting to provide that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Good Stephen.
When we take a look at the IEPs for the folks that are being taken care of out of district, how's that working now, Meg? Are we still providing that in an out-of-district placement setting? And if not, are we going to get reimbursed for the cost associated with that? A lot of this ties back to, you know, previous meetings and conversations we've had.
Yeah, we were monitoring that pretty closely because for the first week or so of remote learning, we were up and running at SAU 39 gangbusters. And I don't know where Massachusetts was, but they, but, so we were calling and I was on the phone with program providers and whatnot. But they have started their remote learning opportunities and they've reached out and connected with families of students that are in their programs. And they are now providing something similar to what we're doing with our children. So they are receiving their program remotely now. They were a little slow to the party, I would say.
But Debrina, an opportunity to reintroduce that back in district instead of paying the escalated cost for out-of-district placement for those situations?
Well, that requires, while that seems like it would be something we could potentially do, it requires, those are placement changes at that point in time. And so if I say, "Okay, let's get the IEP team back together, we're going to make a placement change and we're going to pull the child back into district." And then on May 5th, we go away from remote learning and we're back in school. I'm in the same boat that I would have been in before in that we don't have an appropriate program replacement for the child in district. And I would argue too, that the level of supports and services that they're able to provide are out-of-district children, we wouldn't be able to provide even with the staff that we have giving the remote learning now.
And so as much as you can say in public, and please stop me if I'm saying too much, are we expected to spend right around the same run rate that we were talking about in our previous meetings for those costs? Or are we going to be coming in substantially lower than that?
Um, I think we were, so I can get a lot more specific if we do a non-public, but right now I'm not anticipating a cost savings with the exception possibly of Transportation.
Thanks Meg, that's really helpful. John, do you want to continue?
Sure, just to continue on with remote learning as a whole. So remote learning, as it's continued in the classroom, as you know or may not know, our schedule continues at five days a week. Looking at instruction on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Tuesday, Thursday is kind of the catch-up as well as check-in period where there's office hours provided by staff and connection time provided by all the staff to just meet with and talk with students. Paris has been brought on for the past two weeks now where they're actually pushing in as well, whether it be those breakout rooms, as we've talked about previously, as mentioned by Meg, or also working individually with some of the students' consistency as the program would have operated similarly as we have been typical outside of the school day or within a school day, sorry. The nurse, Paris, custodians, everybody's kind of a full staff doing as, not as the typical again, but doing as much as possible with, given the circumstances. You have custodians in during the week and they've been continuing to, after cleaning the building, then after that on some smaller projects around the building, started to do some improvements, smaller stuff around the building just that they wouldn't have normally got to. At this point, they're actually ready, if they needed to, to actually go forward and start cleaning the buildings, such as doing the stripings of the floors and washing the classrooms more thoroughly than they've already done. Kitchen staff has been utilized throughout the SAU and I can dip into that as well. I talked to John Lash today and we were talking about the school lunch program. At this point, he has over, and I apologize numbers, over 100 meals that they're covering every single day and 50 families for those 100 meals, which is giving them a breakfast and a lunch every single day. Believe it or not, there's only four families, no, sorry, three families out of Mount Vernon at this time. I'm going to rebroadcast that this week. He said it's broadcast to every family and they're providing it throughout with lots of support. Again, some of those... He said it's broadcast to every family and they're providing it throughout with lots of support. Again, some of the pairs before they were brought back into the classroom were providing meals. They were traveling with that and he's been accessing obviously other staff throughout the SAU do that. Our kitchen staff has been utilized in that manner as well. And for school counselor, she's been reaching out. She has continued with her appointments for scheduling. Not exactly a telehealth model, but still checking in with students on a regular weekly basis. As well as some of the students that we know were having some harder hit or some more challenges or. Academics. So she's following in with the families as well as with the students to see if there's anything else that we can provide. And we've been very efficient with getting them. Devices or getting them other supports as needed. IEP services, the mega we went through, school counselors already done. Budget update. I don't have anything specific, but I imagine Michelle's gonna need to pop in or can give you give more of that information. When it goes back to the food services, John didn't see and would get us that information for the next meeting next month. If there were any concerns about. The finances, he said he does obviously not see a revenue coming in. So of course there's salary or sorry hourly wage and benefits that we're still paying to our kitchen staff. But there is no revenue coming into the school. So thinking of that, he said he doesn't think it would be a huge amount, but again, something that we can get more about when we get back together in May. The other piece that I threw out to him is to find out the number of. Accounts right now that are a little deficit in the sense of paying, but again, not to worry about that. Usually a minimal number that we cover before July first, which is the deadline by law. Questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, it's early, but regarding the salaries and stuff. Is there an opportunity for us to explore federal funding to backfill that? If if this goes on for a while, we're paying salaries out, no revenue in. I'm wondering if there's some federal relief. That we can apply for either through the state or directly to the feds on that.
I can answer that. So we have been told by the New Hampshire Department of Education. That we are getting federal funding. It is. It's called the CARES Act. It's flowing through the state, so it will be the state that actually passes that along to us. And we anticipate that being about eighty-five percent of what we are typically allocated for our Title One funding. And for FY nineteen, and I think they were using the FY nineteen allocation for Title One, and it's about eighty-five percent. Off the top of my head, that's somewhere between it's not a lot. It's somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars or so for Mont Vernon. So it's a fairly small amount. That will be allocated for federal funding. We don't have the exact numbers, but in the range of that. And we have to look. At how we best utilize that funding. And it really was a broad range. Of, you know, things that we can do with those funds. We don't have any of the details for that yet. We should be getting some of that soon. It certainly can be used for anything. Associated with COVID nineteen. So certainly could be for, you know, lunches. It could be. Other expenses that we had that we didn't anticipate, but it could also be used to extend summer programming over the summer for students. So we'd have to really look at what's the best way to utilize that. So a pretty small amount. But we've also frozen our budget and we're only. Hitting our budget for essential things. So, you know, we're we're hoping that also helps as well. And I'm sure Michelle will probably be able to give even more details at our next meeting for that. But hopefully does that answer Peter?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah.
Christine, was there a reason why Michelle wasn't here tonight?
Yeah, so actually there are three board meetings going on right now. Adam is at Sokegan. He will be coming to you at seven o'clock on for your non-public session on Michelle running the Amherst meeting. So you got me for this meeting. So we were just because they were mostly organizational meetings. But then they, of course, turned out there were other agenda items on them, but we had kind of stacked these just because we end up waiting. A period of time after the vote and then SAU is coming together all at the end. So. We'll have to look at whether this format works for people or not, kind of stacking the meetings or if there ends up being, you know, holes or gaps with us each in different meetings.
I think John Lash may be. At the SAU board meeting as well.
Yeah, yeah, John Lash will be at SAU to fill in any more details on food service.
So Sarah, two more quick, quick things if that's all right. Number one, the uncomfortable conversation regarding furloughs. Is there any entertainment at the SAU level regarding? Non-contractual obligated employees being furloughed between now and the end of the year?
So you're talking about food service. Workers, because I think that's in.
Yeah, so the not non-contractual would be food service custodial. I don't believe or contractual. And paras, correct? Those are the three.
Right, the yeah, there. So I'd have to look into paras, Meg. I don't know if you know, while we don't have a contract. With them, I think they signed a year agreement with us, even though it's not. I'd have to check with Adam on paraprofessionals, whether which.
They have a contract. They just they but they do not have a union, so they're not unionized, but they are under contract.
For the year with us. Is that right, Meg? Yeah, so I think would only be custodian and food service. And because food.
Office staff and the nurse, are they included in some sort of contract with the MVA?
Nurse is. Office staff is not. The office staff has still been working. A decent amount. Is certainly different work and that's interesting as to where they fall for that. We haven't started those conversations. You know, if this happened in September, I think we would probably be having different conversations. But food service has been supporting. You know, we're kind of consolidating food service, but supporting with deliveries and, you know, across the SAU. I'm not sure how who's working exactly. John might be able to give you more details about that and custodians have been working. You know, and I think Michelle can probably Michelle and Adam can talk more about that, but we can certainly put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I was just curious in terms of if you guys are even exploring the idea as, you know, things become a little bit more expensive from a support standpoint. By the way, the custodians did a great job with the bird garden. I drove around there this past weekend. And it looks awesome. So kudos to them if you could pass that on, John.
Will do. Thank you.
The other question I've got is is what type of feedback are you hearing from teachers in terms of the support? Are they getting all the stuff that they need? What do they need from us? And more importantly, where do you think the gaps are in terms of? The level of expertise or the equipment, the resources that that they need to accomplish what they're supposed to be doing?
I think currently all the pieces are being played and played well. It was a quick learn, right? We started on a Monday and didn't didn't head back in and we dove into heavy training on that Monday and Tuesday and then part of the day on Wednesday for some of the staff who are still sticking around and supporting others. Or supporting themselves and getting up and running for Thursday. Thursday went live right after Saint Patrick's Day and it's been a run since. I think overall right now, we're in a much better place. Over the first few weeks, obviously it was very rough. It was very fatiguing. It hasn't lessened, I'd say, in fatigue. The workload and I think just the conditions obviously make it very much a lot more challenging. And then can, as you can tell, like tonight with me being here twice with technology, whether it be with families or their own devices. Consistency of who is able to provide that support at home. And obviously the adults at home are trying to work as well when the devices are available. There's so many factors that we have no control over that we had. I would say a complete monopoly on for six hours plus a day. Previously, when we're in the building together. I think right now there isn't anything that I've been hearing that they need. To be honest with you, we've even offered up. Given the circumstances and the way things are going, if you needed something else from your classroom. That you need to go back in to get because we'll be out longer than May fourth, let's say. I think right now I have maybe five or six adults who would like to be in the building to grab a couple more supplies to have at home, but really everybody's up and running and doing what the best obviously that they can. It's it's obviously, you know, as we can tell, I think for everybody and and we know that it's not just us. It's the world. It's been a challenge, obviously, to do all the things that we're doing and to keep it going. But yeah, I'd say at this point, I don't think there's anything else. And I apologize. I think there's a third part I missed.
You hit it on the on the the nail on the head. The only thing I would just offer as a board member, as a community member, that if the teachers need any resource from their classroom. Whether it's something normally would be used or not, whether it be a chair, whether it be their desk, a table, you know, please just allow them to take it home just so they can actually have the environment that's most. Appropriate for their 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 teaching style, just to make them get as comfortable as we possibly can.
Absolutely.
At this point.
Yeah, actually, we just sent out a survey SAU wide, but particularly to our students, our building. What we're gonna do is we'll be. Parlaying all that information out to each building administrator and then we'll be deciding at that point. And I think based on our numbers, I'll be able to bring on the people to basically get into the building and take them back home. We're talking probably fifteen, twenty minutes max for each person at the end. And again. We can space it out so the people aren't within a six foot radius of one another and be able to get in safely, get out safely and head on their way.
And Mont Vernon.
Much larger numbers.
We have the entry and exit doors for each classroom. So Michelle and I were actually the least concerned about letting staff into Mont Vernon. So Michelle and I met today to come up with a plan. To support teachers. So we plan on on setting a one day inside next week for teachers to access. The building, the ones that had requested it and will support them in doing that. And, you know, whatever they need to take from their classrooms, whether it's a chair or. You know, an extra monitor. And we've tried to help teachers with requests that were more immediate. If we had it at SAU, it'd be available to the teachers.
I would also add that, as you know, you have an amazing staff. What they've done in the short time period, I would say SAU wide, but obviously I'll glow mostly about our staff has been. Heroic, I think, is probably not the most appropriate word, but probably just defines who they are as people. They have. Pulled themselves and one another to a level of understanding and appreciation and respect for and collaboration for an amazing amount of work in a short amount of time. And continue to realize that obviously we're gonna get done what we get done. And they've been more than helpful and flexible to families and reaching out. Some have made personal phone calls to families to check in. They're just. They've done definitely above and beyond at this time. It's been incredible. And for where they are right now, I'd say technologically is. I could have never thought they would have gotten there this fast, but obviously so due to the need to be there. So they've done it, but they've been amazing. Steve, you're unmuted.
Space bar doesn't work all the time. When when we take a look at my experience in the sixth grade, I could tell you right now, the it's very, very assuring that they're doing an awful lot above and beyond. Where the normal teacher would be check-ins with my son or the teacher meetings with with parents. A lot of folks are really commenting about the support that parents feel. Clearly, this is the first time I've ever become a homeschool teacher. This is new to me on top of doing my full-time job and, you know, just that the effort specifically with those two, because those are the ones I've seen firsthand. I'm sure it's being replicated across the entire building. It's impressive and they should be, you know, you know, told that they're doing a great job by you and and hopefully Adam and Christine. So thanks to them and kudos.
Yeah, they've been.
And don't be surprised. Some of our community events will still take place. We're already working on our Read Across America, which is Read Across Mont Vernon and reached out to a number of people. Some of you may be guest readers by that. But some of our other key events, we're still looking at doing our kindergarten night. We're still gonna do it. It'll be online. We'll still do Reading Across America online. We'll do a lot of events. We're planning on it. Still doing, moving forward.
There's one very last thing and then I'll stop. I promise, Sarah, is from from a counseling standpoint. If it's possible, if you can somehow get her to reach out, not necessarily one-to-one with kids, but maybe join one of these class Zoom sessions that they're doing twice a week. I think that we may be not necessarily missing the boat, but that connection. From the emotional side of things that are going on, kids are kind of in a state of flux. You know, we may not be going back to school this year. And I think having that 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 counseling side, that social work side. Interjecting into some of those sessions could be very valuable for some people.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any other questions for John before we move on? Thanks, John. So we have the consent agenda. I know that consent agenda item two, we actually need a motion for. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items one, three, four, and five as written?
I make a motion except one, two, four, and five as written.
One, three, four, and.
One, three, four, and five is written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we can do a roll call vote. Anyone starting? Lawrence, yes?
O'Keefe, yes.
Thank Dennis, yes.
So consent agenda items one, three, four, and five have passed. Number two, I know we need a motion. I'm gonna scroll down in the packet. So we need a motion to accept the unanticipated revenue of five hundred and twenty-five dollars from Health Trust. To be used for teacher and staff wellness programs. Says that these funds shall be accepted into the general fund. Was anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion except to five hundred and twenty-five dollars from the Health Trust.
Do you have a second?
Second here.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just one quick question. In terms of that not being used in the remaining part of the school year, Christine, does that go back to the taxpayer?
I believe it would be because it's accepted into the general fund. That's it's usually used for our wellness programs and I'm Carrie James used to oversee that. So Amina is brand new to us. Carrie just left us Tuesday was her last day and Amina is our new. Director of HR. So I'm not sure what her plans are for that funding, but we usually do something with teachers. So. That's a good question with what will happen to that.
So my concern is if we accept that tonight into the general fund, we're talking about the next three months of using it and no one's back at school. So we literally would be just taking this check and putting it back to the taxpayer.
Yeah, if it's into the general fund, you know, let me ask Michelle and Adam that question and. Maybe we go on to our next item and come back to that.
Let's table that for now. We'll table that discussion. Okay. We do have a first reading of two policies this evening. That is JL CJ and JF ABD. So that's concussions and head injuries and also the admission of homeless students. So Scott, just for your. For your knowledge, what we usually do is we do a first reading of the policy. Where we can ask any questions that we have. If the board has any questions, we can send it back to the policy committee if we have wording issues. Or we can, we can choose to accept it as it is and go on to a second reading and adoption usually at our next meeting. I don't know that there's anything pressing about either of these two policies presently. Christine, do you know otherwise?
No, I'm I'm trying to remember with these specific policies. And, you know, there there wasn't anything specific like the admission of homeless students. I feel like that was when we had pulled apart. Homeless from foster youth. We didn't update our policy.
Yeah, I think they're both just updates to make sure that we are current.
Yeah.
And I'll say from the policies committee standpoint, we think they're pretty good.
Yeah.
But if anybody has any questions or would like anything to go back for a policy committee review, let me know. Our board goals would be the next thing if there's no discussion on either of those policies. Anyone have anything they want to discuss on those policies before we move on? No, we're good. Okay, because we'll definitely be able to discuss them again next month and hopefully Jess will be with us for that one as well. So moving on to the board goals, we do have them here in the packet. Let me scroll down and see if I can find the page.
And we provided just a brief update on some of them and obviously given our remote learning, there are gonna be some changes. There. To some of our items, but we tried to give you as much information as we could to provide an update. So I don't know if it makes more sense if there's any. Questions, if you've had a chance to review that. I know we met with fifth and sixth grade today to actually talk about. Scoring and reporting and with, you know, K four. Again, this is really challenging for us to be able to score and and report in a remote learning environment. We're really looking at how we can provide more narrative reports for students. So I think even some of the pieces around empower might be a challenge. For us to come back to you in June with. So just so you're aware, we're gonna do our best to share this information. With you, but already there were, you know, our NWEA, while we met our growth targets, we won't have spring testing to be able to share with you. So unfortunately, a lot is disrupted. But we thought that this update would be helpful for you to see where we currently are. And, you know, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Actually, John, I have one question for you. I know the the our Year of Math Initiative with those great four houses and all that, is there are there plans for that to continue in this online environment or how is that going? You're muted. We can't hear you. We can't hear you, John.
Yeah, trying to play with the phone and the keyboard. All right, so, sorry, up until St. Patrick's Day, they were great. And then obviously we went to remote learning. So since then, the math interventions at both elementary schools in Mont Vernon and in Amherst have aligned and started to create a math club throughout as optional activities and done some really crazy stuff. That's invited all the students. I have to admit that it's not been as well participated by the masses. Though a number of our students are part of it, it winds up being more that extra compared to what they're doing for basic instruction. So we haven't pushed that issue. And I would, would want to check in with Charlene first to how she felt we could kind of address that unless we stopped and did a whole school day, which I have to be honest, I haven't figured out how to do that digitally yet. I could do it by grade level. We can maybe do something fun, but trying to bring the houses together, it would be, that would be an amazing feat if we could digitally. So at this point, sadly, I'd have to say we were slowed down in that process, not that it slowed down what our math abilities have been like. But again, for that specific, I'd have to find out more from Charlene.
Okay, thanks for the update. I appreciate it.
And Sarah, to go back, I did get information from Michelle that they're able to accept that $525 into grant funding. And grant funds can continue past that June 30th date so that it would not go back to the taxpayer. So she was comfortable with you moving ahead to accept that revenue and it could be used next year for staff wellness.
Okay, perfect. So let's just finish out this one little conversation of the board goals. Anyone have any questions or comments about the board goal update? No? Okay. So hearing none, let's just pop back to that consent agenda item. So it looks like we will need a motion.
I want to amend my motion to accept it as a grant instead of the general fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. I'll say Lawrence, yes?
Eckhart, yes. O'Keefe, yes. Saint Dennis, yes.
Great, thank you. That motion passes. Passed consent agenda. Okay, I'm just cognizant of the time because I know that Adam was preparing for us to head into non-public around seven.
Yep, he was just sending me a message. He's going to be popping in. I'm going to make him the host and pop out. So I think he's probably popping in within a few seconds.
Okay, and is there anything special that we need to do to make this non-public, Christine?
When Adam, yeah, so we definitely want to take a motion to go into non-public. I would stop recording. And then Adam would be able to, you know, he'll pop in and take over. And then we would just want to come out of non-public at the end and then make sure we're recording again when you come out of non-public. And Sarah, I'm happy to either, those few items we didn't get to, at least you have that information. I'm happy to put them on the agenda for next month if we want to revisit those items. I don't know what makes the most sense or if you want to talk later about.
Christine, I'll go out because you're going to do a non-public that I don't think has anything to do with me.
Unless, Meg, we might need you for, if you've got more information on the special ed issue.
Can we start there and then we can do the other item that needs to be done?
Yeah, that would be my ask as well.
Yeah, if that's okay, I'd love you to stay for just a minute.
Sure, I apologize. I keep muting myself. It's boring here.
Oh, wow, it doesn't look like it, Meg.
And John, just one very quick question for you. School graduation, end of year stuff. If we don't go back to school, what, what sort of your, your thought process around that in under 30 seconds?
Well, actually, tonight at a sixth grade meeting, I was told that a parent had asked that. Sorry, I couldn't meet tonight. But still thinking about some possibilities, to be honest with you, I think knowing that we might not be back, but I feel like June or July possibly still a chance. So I think there's other conversations to have. So I wouldn't put it totally out of the possibilities yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been talking SAU wide about that. How do we still do some of those big celebrations and when might that happen?
Okay, great, thank you. I would accept a motion to go into non-public. I think we're citing RSA 91A32.
Yeah, it's three something.
Three colon two something.
Is it on the agenda, actually?
It's on the agenda, but there's nothing in the parentheses, so I'm not sure which one.
Yeah. Adam will probably know off the top of his head. I should have made sure I got that. But when he comes in, we can fill that in. I can try to figure out. I don't know them off the top of my head. I should. But it's for personnel.
Okay. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
Go into non-public. Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Lawrence, yes?
Eckhart, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
Saint Dennis, yes.